People work for Bojor City and all the people in Bojor City. Thank us for being here and give us the right man to do our job today. In your name, amen.
Amen. All right, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Phyllis.
Um, Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All right, guys, we need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So move, second.
Any questions from the audience on the agenda? All right, guys, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. It popped up.
Well, we're doing electronic voting.
Okay, I'm sorry. There we go.
I worked on it today. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve the minutes of the April 8, 2025 Administrative Council meeting in dispense with the reading.
Second.
Second.
I second you.
All those in favor? Public comment?
I'm sorry? Oh. Any public comments? On the minutes? All right, guys, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Why, it's not popping up, I don't know. Let's see, hearing to review the recommendation of removal of a dilapidated structure located at 1401 Burchett Street, Bojor City.
I'm Philip Coleman, work for Property Standards. Have a home at, uh, 1401 Burchett that's in pretty bad shape. You can see through the pictures. It's, uh, boards falling off of it, the walls got cracks in it. We went inside, looked, there's a hole in the roof, there's mold, mildew all inside it. Ceilings fell in in places. We just asked if we could, uh, go ahead and tear it down, if that's all right.
Good afternoon. Haagen-Pew is curator for 1401 Burchett Street. My office is 333 Texas Street, Suite 2100, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I researched this one and found that Willie Lee Keys is the owner. He died on September 16th, 2007. Succession was opened three days later, two days later on September 19th by her daughter, his daughter, Deborah Williams. I could not find an address for her in the pleadings. It was never, the succession was never closed, the property was never distributed. So it's been sitting there for almost 20 years.
2007, my bang.
And I mailed a letter to the home because I didn't have another address and I got no response.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we remove the structure as soon as legally possible.
My second.
Any questions from the audience?
Motion carries. Hearing to review the recommendation of removal of a dilapidated structure located at 613 Edgar Street, Bojor City.
Afternoon, gentlemen. Chris Ferguson, Inspector, Property Standards. Back in March, I found that the, uh, this particular mobile home had, uh, all of its doors open and most of its windows were broken out. And the, uh, the ceilings were falling, the floors were, uh, rotten, falling in. And, uh, some of the, uh, the transients had, you know, made homes in it. So I, uh, I ordered it, uh, I condemned it. And since then, Mrs. Hart has been working to get it, um, back up to shape. Going through all the proper channels to try to get inspections done on it. And also, you know, she's, today she was, she had some folks out there putting, uh, a new roof on it. Now, it does on the interior look bad because, at the moment, because the, uh, the whole place was gutted. All the drywall, all of everything is out of there. They're replacing the rotten wood right now, that kind of thing. What I would like very much to do is to order it condemned and torn down, removed. But I would like to hold that for 60 days.
So we already got a roof and we've got a lot of the inside.
Yes, the roof was going on.
She's the property owner?
Yes, she is the property.
Could you come up now?
Please take your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Jones Hart, 613 Edgar. And my home where I live is 320 Shortleaf in Horton.
And you're in the process of renovating this mobile home?
Yes, sir. Gutted it and, um, getting, um, everything taken care of on the outside first. All the wood for the flooring, the porch that was falling in, that's brand new. The front part, um, that was like an add-on, all of that's brand new.
And all the, all the applicable permits have been pulled to do the, do this work?
Because this is a mobile home, uh, she has to go through the office of the state fire marshal to get all that taken care of. And she's in the application process at this time.
Are you the owner of the home?
Yes, sir.
Are you?
Yes, sir. I lived, I actually lived next door for five years, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. And so, right now, like even on the front, um, so that it doesn't look like a mobile home anymore, I've bought materials to also wrap it so that it doesn't appear to be a mobile home anymore.
Mr. President, if I may, the procedurally, I'm a little at a loss. I know we do this pretty often where we'll go ahead and order it condemned and, and then, but defer, uh, the condemnation for a set number of days. And then, but I think it'd be good to have the record clear that whatever day that is, that if it's, if it's not been repaired to Property Standards' satisfaction, that it will be demolished. You know, or after that date, we'll put it back on, it'll go for bids. We don't have to come back for administrative counsel. It'll just, it, it's gonna work through the process and it will be torn down. I know that administratively, because we've done this quite a bit recently, we've ordered something and then a property owner has popped up or they've done it themselves, which saves the city money. Or we've, you know, they fixed it, which saves the city money. And we just administratively don't move forward with the condemnation. But I think just procedurally, we want to make sure that it's condemned and whatever the date is, if today's the third and...
The next meeting will be July, well, that's the July meeting. The next meeting would be August 5th.
So, so do you under, do you understand what he's asking?
I think so. Like Mr. Chris said, he's not sure, like, what the state does, if they drag their feet and that sort of thing. And I noticed in, um, I don't know which document that is, but it says it gives like, um, up to a year to board it, which I don't want to do that. That's why, he was like, I don't want to do that. So that's why I went ahead and got the eyesore out of the way. So if that, which is already in the document, I'm not sure which one it is, that offers that, I would like to continue to be in contact with Mr. Chris so that we are continuing to move forward. I went to the bank today, I've already gotten approval, I have that letter here so that you see that. I'm not somebody just saying, don't, don't, um, tear it down and I don't have the means to, to move for, forward with it. And I'll get, I'll, I'll let you see that if you like. But that's what I would like to do because I've seen things fall through the cracks too, where if you go ahead and say, okay, condemn it, and he, he's already told you that significant progress, all that you saw, all of that's gone. I paid to have all that stuff gutted out. I'm getting the floors all shored up. When you go and look at it, you say, oh, no, that's not to be condemned. But we do know that there are other things in the process. My only concern about going ahead and condemning it is three months later, it's torn down and like, wait, what happened? And so that's my concern.
I wish we had more people like you that would Yeah. fix these things.
Yes, sir.
You know, instead of condemning them.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you're doing it.
If I could make this suggestion, if we, if we, if we go ahead and, if you, if the council's prerogative is to vote to condemn it and set, but defer the condemnation until Aug- Friday, August the 8th, then that gives, or more than 60 days and it's after the next administrative council date. So that if progress has been made, we could add it to that agenda and the council could consider it then. Or if she's done, then you could, you know, we could revoke it. At least it'd be a way to check the progress before the drop dead date.
Here, here it is. It's, um, in this, it's a violation code, um, I have glasses in my hand. Do you all mind if, um, this vote is like, what? The option, um, and I don't want it to stay vacant that because I need to get my money back off of it. But it says, um, or board up until future repair. Boarding up, boarding the building up for future repair shall not extend beyond one year unless approved. Which I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to, um, extend it for a year. But since the provision is here so that there are no cracks, that, you know, but even things can happen. Even my husband had a stroke. So a lot of this having taken place has to do with having to be, um, here and there in different places. So to make sure, and if you want to see this, um, from Barksdale, I have, um, the approval letter is in excess of $25,000 that I have and, um, to take care of that. So, um, that's, I don't know if I'm making myself
Yeah, you are.
Clear. And the, the other thing was like, um, like the abandonment, um, issue, like, uh, the water even here. I know he found this in March and it did, it happened quick where it fell in disarray. But, um, I had water in it. You know, the, um, it was, it was in, in order in what it needed to have. So, um, I feel like I'm rambling, I don't know if I got my point across.
Yeah. I'm, I'm a little, are you arguing against us condemning it today?
Yes, sir.
You are? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And so, and property stand? I've, it, I've, I've, I've flipped houses, but I've never had to go through the state fire marshals' process. What, is 60 days a reasonable timeline for her to get permits?
I've, I've not had to do that. We've not had an owner have to do that. Most of what we do are houses.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Taylor is the one that put me on that.
Have we asked Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor's the one that put me on that. And I wanted to get her on it because they don't, I don't believe they even give permits for mobile homes because there's no code for them.
Right.
Really?
And that's, that's why I wanted to put her in touch with the state fire marshal.
Okay.
Well, we got the geniuses over there gonna figure it out.
And is the, is the mobile home demobilized?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's, uh, attached to the, to the land.
Okay.
Would y'all figure it out?
I was just trying to get clarification as to what she was reading from about the one year.
Oh, that's our...
But I, I have a good understanding of it now. But I, I think the, I think the issue is I don't think she wants to do that. She wants to go ahead and fix it, which is, seems better all around.
Mr. Ray, isn't it already condemned? They've already condemned it, this is just upholding that condemnation?
Was this on an agenda before?
The, the notice of condemnation was filed on the 14th of March.
So it hasn't been condemned yet?
And it was also posted.
Usually what happens before, that it's condemned and then the board is deciding whether or not to demolish it.
To move forward and tear it down?
Right.
You have to act on the condemnation.
We're not, we're not voting on condemnation.
The condemnation is already done.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, if I was using the wrong verbiage, I mean, it's, the condemnation is done by operation of just posting it. But then y'all are voting to move forward and tear it down. So what I'm just suggesting is, I know that we've done before, is we can defer the date for it to be torn down. I'm suggesting deferring that to August the 8th. And then, and then it gives her time to more than 60 days. And then if, if it's been remedied, she can be on that August 5th date and, and you can order for it.
Come back and ask them to move it back.
And it says it's up to a year, but doesn't mean that it has to be a year, correct? Okay.
Yeah, right. It says, it says more than a year, the board would have to approve it, but I'm not asking for more than a year.
I just wonder if 60 days is enough time to...
And, and...
We can, we can, we can go...
Go as long as we want.
Well, that's why, if she comes back on August 5th and she's made progress, then you could defer it another, you know. But I'd hate to just open end it.
Yeah, so let's do this.
But it's on here as that it's, that that's possible. And I've shown, you know, that I've, I've gotten this appro, may I approach though, you all can see this?
We believe you're gonna do it.
We'll have to make a copy of it.
What's that?
We'll have to make a copy of it.
Yeah.
Thing that I was asking is like, what, um, what denotes like abandonment? And I am, um, working with Ms. Quinzelah, somebody, at the, at the State Department. And so, um, if we can get all of those things done and, um, get the plumbing done, get the electricity, um, done so that they can come and inspect it and get everything, uh, taken care of, I'm, I'm all in with that. I'm just afraid that, you know, in two months, just say something, God forbid, something happens. I've already put 15, $20,000 in. I care about that, but when it comes to what we've written, it's like, we hate to do it, but here the gavel hits. So I'm just asking for, for mercy in, um, giving me time to make sure that as I'm going in, um, putting more money into this to make, um, this a better neighborhood, to make sure that the property is up to standards, to make me and you all in the, um, neighborhood proud, to give me time to be able to, um, do that. And this document, which is from, um, the city, says that, um, the structure could be boarded up until future repair, up to a year. And beyond a year, it would require your approval. And I'm not asking to go beyond a year.
Let me say this. He's attorney, he's gonna be here unless you get fired or something. He'll be here, he'll be here, the property standards guys will be here.
Yeah.
These two guys will be here, they've all heard what's going on, won't be here. But, uh, I mean, they're not gonna go back on the word.
But, this is the motion I want to make. I want to give her six months. What would that date be, Phyllis?
Six months would be, let's see, would be the December 2nd meeting.
So I want to defer, I want to defer it to December 2nd, but I want her on the agenda for the August 8th to give us an update on the progress.
Yes, sir.
I think, just a clarification, a couple of things. I think the August 8th date was, I suggested that was a Friday.
Oh, well, the August...
August 5th, I think, is the date.
The August meeting date. The August meeting date.
August 5th.
August 5th.
Yes, August 5th.
And then, other clarification, I think I finally got it straight in my mind. It's already condemned, it would be the demolition date.
The demolition.
So, so just to make sure we're clear, you would be deferring the demolition date to...
Because I understand her, understand her point that if she puts mon, $10,000 in it and it's not up to our standards and we demolish it and she's out 10 grand, that that's... So I'd like to give her the time to get the house up to, up to standard. So I think six months is appropriate, but I would like you to come update us on the progress at our August 5th meeting.
Yes, sir.
Is that fair? Everybody's good with that?
What's the, what's the December meeting date?
Uh, December 2nd.
Okay, so then December 5th would be another Friday. If we, if we, if you deferred the...
Us, August 5th meeting
Right.
for her to come update us in December 2nd is when we defer.
But I think it'd be important to go ahead and set, vote to set the demolition for December the 5th.
Okay, I got you.
That gives her the six months, and then she can give an update in August. And you could always push it farther, but at least you have a date and we don't have to come back and renotice everything. It's condemned, it's set to be demolished on December the 5th.
Yes, sir.
You got that, Phyllis?
And if you're not done, like I said, these guys will have the, they got the authority to give you more days.
Just bring us some pictures showing what's
Yes, sir.
progress you've made and all.
Will do.
And I will, I'll get, I'll get some pictures as well. That way, uh, progress will be noted.
Okay.
So we're deferring the demolition.
And I want to commend Mr. Chris.
Don't do that, don't do that.
Please allow me to, because he followed up and he said, Ms. Jones Hart, did you send that? Would you please make sure I get it? He's just been amazing. He didn't have to do that. He could have just let whatever go through and I didn't even know about it because of all the things that are going on with me. And so I just wanted to publicly thank him for doing that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. He's top of my house, we talk every now and then too.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad he does, I like to know that.
So I kind of hijacked it, Mr. President, but I mean, I have to guess you, to clarify, Mr. Smith, is your motion to vote to demolish it, but to defer the demolition to December the 5th and to have the matter placed back on the August 5th administrative agenda for an update?
Yep.
I've been hijacked before.
Uh, and then Mr. Maggio is second in that.
All right, counsel, please.
I appreciate you all so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I hadn't voted yet.
Holler, holler. All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, did yours pop up?
It just popped up.
Motion carries.
All right, you're gonna have to good luck with it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I live, I live just bottom mile from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody got anything?
Uh, Justin, uh, we corresponded about a couple of properties in Shady Grove.
Right.
Is there any update on those?
Um, one of them, the blight's in progress. We aren't at the point where we can issue a summons yet. I don't know off the top of my head when that's due. The other one, the, um, with the hole in the roof, they are in the process of going their insurance to get that fixed. So we're giving them time to do that. And then the one that's under construction, they still have permits. Those permits don't expire until, I think, October. So we have to lay off until October.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I think while we're getting updates from Justin, hang on, Justin, don't sit down yet. The, the deal that involved, I know there was a, there was a, a property that we had set for condemnation. Maybe we condemned it and didn't the property owner go ahead and tear it down at their expense?
You talking about Traffic Street?
I think so.
It was, it was torn down at their expense. The, a lot of the debris is still out there and I'm working with them to get that cleared off right now.
Okay, but they did go ahead and tear it down at their expense and
Yes, sir.
we saved the city, okay.
Anybody else got anything? Make it adjourned. Boy, that was quick.